Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer by Councilman Hesse followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
This evening, we ask for wisdom as we serve our city and our constituents. We ask for guidance in the decisions that will be made this evening. We ask compassion for those in our community who are suffering and in need of help. We ask for protection over those who keep our community and our country safe. And finally, we offer gratitude for a decisive chief's victory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. I'll now call to order the Monday, February 3, 2020, City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Rose.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hesse.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda by adding item four, B, C, and D to the miscellaneous agenda items. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Items for A, miscellaneous agenda items. We have some very special guests with us this evening, so I'd like to welcome Lieutenant David Williams to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council.
We're going to start out. Paul, you want to go ahead and come up with Drax?
As many of you know, we have added another K-9 to our list of available service helpers. This is Drax, and I'm not going to try to explain Drax's true history, so I'm going to allow his handler, Paul Gash, to do that. Officer Gash is very familiar with our program. He has been one of our K-9 officers for several years, and he just got Drax after we retired his previous K-9 buzz. So I'm going to let Paul explain. If someone has questions, he's a better man to explain it than me. Go ahead, Paul.
Sit over here. Sit over here. So this is Drax. Drax is a 20-month-old German Shepherd. He started life in Hungary, where he shipped over to Pennsylvania where we met. Drax is a little high strung, so I'm going to try and talk fast so I don't make him sit for too long. But picked him up in Pennsylvania, and we came back and went through eight weeks of basic training, and we've hit the streets now in service and had some success here early on, so we look forward to several more years. I won't keep you, waste your time.
Well, thank you, Officer Gash, and we are very pleased to welcome the newest member of the Jefferson City Police Department. We are thrilled to have K-9 Officer Drax here and looking forward to having him as part of the police force. I know that he really is going to be beneficial in many ways, and if people are interested, I know there's city funding and there's also some opportunities for private donors, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We've enjoyed several donations from several different entities throughout the city.
Great.
Riley Chevrolet was one, several other. Diamond Dog Food helped out quite a bit, as well as city funds.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate the community's support. Does council have any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I saw very good information there. And question I have is this train will watch this kind of company?
So he's a dual-purpose dog. He does patrol, which is tracking and handling protection and apprehension, as well as drug detection. He's trained in cocaine, heroin, and methamphetamine and the way that those drugs.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Well, we're glad to have Drax. I know this is not a typical day for him to have to come to the City Council meeting, but we're really thrilled that we get to have him here and look forward to welcoming him. So Lieutenant Williams, did you want to get a picture?
I'll take your camera.
Okay. Sure. Okay, so we'll let council come back here and we'll see if Drax will smile for the camera. Thank you, Officer Gash. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight. And we also have Lori, who is our new shelter manager that we would like to welcome and introduce tonight.
I neglected to say that on behalf of chief, he was planning to be here, but he's not feeling well, so I'm sitting in for him. So if this doesn't go well, you tell him it went well, okay? I'd like to introduce to you our new animal control manager, Lori Blatter. She is originally from Nebraska. Won't hold that against her because we have Alabama here. Sharon, the bachelor's science degree in business management from Salt Lake City, Utah. She has credit hours in emergency management from Frederick Community College in Frederick, Maryland. She was most recently employed as a state floodplain management officer with SEMA, and she's been with us since September of 2019.
Great. Welcome. Would you like to tell us a little about yourself or what you enjoy most about the shelter?
Well, I would say, he told the rest of it, I would say what I'm most pleased with is the wonderful team that I was given when I started there, and they do what they do well, and they're a caring group of individuals, and we can always do better, and we're working on some things, and we really look forward to, I look forward to working with them and everybody in the community to always do better. We can always do better, and building those partnerships with the community as well.
Great. Well, welcome. We're happy to have you at the Jefferson City Animal Shelter. Does council have any questions or comments? Okay, well, welcome. And if you'd like to come forward, why don't we get a picture with you and Lieutenant Williams and council, and we will share that also. Thank you. Now, we're also excited to have a special guest from the Missouri Capitol Police.
And with that, I'd like to introduce to council Zim Schwartz. Zim is actually originally from Jeff City. She told me not to say how old she is. So she graduated in 1985 from Elias High School here in Jefferson City, and after more than 20 years as a police officer in Columbia, she left that and went into the 911 realm. So she's had almost 10 years of education in the 911 system. The position opened up here. She wanted to get back home closer to what she really knew. She was in Springfield for several years. I have the pleasure of going to several trainings with her. We attended the National Academy and Quantico together, so I'm real good friends with Zim, and I'm very happy that she came back to help our community out, because even though Missouri Capitol Police is their own problem, we welcome her back in the law enforcement community. Zim?
Thank you, Lieutenant Williams. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. It is a pleasure to be back, and I have received such a warm welcome. It is wonderful to see everyone again. I still have relatives that live here in Jeff City, my parents, so very close. So I am, yes, right next door, and I'm very excited to be back.
Great. Well, we are happy to welcome you, officially welcome you back to Jefferson City, and we really pride ourselves here in the capital city of working so closely with all of our law enforcement agencies, and I know that's something that we're very pleased and proud of between Jefferson City Police Department and Capitol Police and all the surrounding, you know, Cole County and all of our agencies. So we're just happy to have you leading that team, and when it comes to different events like 4th of July, and there's so many, I mean, just countless things that we're just constantly working with Capitol Police. So when we learned that you were the new chief, we wanted to welcome you officially. So does council have any questions or comments?
That's my dad.
That's great. Well, we're happy to welcome you and get to know our council members, and we're glad to have you in that position, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy to welcome you, Chief Zim, and why don't we get another picture, and we'll get council back here. Thank you. the CAFER and PAFER awards. So Mr. Kroll and Margie Miller will present the awards.
We'll have, Margie, come on up, and I would just note that we're pleased to announce that the city has received the Governmental Finance Officers Association recognition for our comprehensive annual financial report and our popular annual financial report for October, for the year ended October 31, 2018, and we expect to receive the same for October 31, 2019. And the CAFER and the PAFER, as we call them, they're on our website if anybody wants to go there and get some additional information on those. I want to thank the mayor and city council for your commitment to ensuring a high level of information to citizens to better appreciate and understand the finances of the city, and I want to congratulate Director of Finance and Information Technology, Margie Miller, and all of the staff and department directors for all of the input that they've put into getting these documents together, and they are very comprehensive. I'm going to read the two documents, and then Margie will invite her staff up, and we can recognize them all together. The first is for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting presented to the city of Jefferson for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended October 31, 2018. And then there's also one for an award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting presented to the city of Jefferson for its financial report for October 31, 2018. So both of those, we'll give those to Margie and have her staff come on it.
And I'd like to introduce Sheila Perry, our chief accountant, and Karasenki, our senior accountant, who do the bulk of the work behind the CAFER and the PAFER. Want to congratulate them.
Thank you for your hard work. We certainly don't ever take this award for granted, because I know there's a lot that goes into it, and we really have confidence in what you all do for our finance department and continuing to achieve such high standards. You really have raised the bar for it, and we appreciate it, and thank you, Ms. Miller, for leading a great department. So does council have any questions, other than join everybody in congratulating you again, and we'd love for y'all to come forward, and we'll get a picture with your awards? And after the Super Bowl last night, we have a special proclamation to share with the city of Jefferson. So this reads, "Whereas the city of Jefferson is wearing red in honor of the NFL Super Bowl '54 champions, the Kansas City Chiefs." Yay. "And whereas the city of Jefferson, capital city of Missouri, is proud of the Kansas City Chiefs and supports our Missouri team, bringing the Vince Lombardi Trophy back to Missouri loudest stadium, hashtag let's go Chiefs, hashtag Super Bowl '54, hashtag Chiefs Kingdom. And whereas the Super Bowl MVP, Kansas City Chiefs, number 15 quarterback Patrick Mahomes, made us all proud to be hashtag Mahomeys. And whereas, under Coach Andy Reid, the Kansas City Chiefs have been an inspiration. They fought and never gave up on their journey to become Super Bowl champions after 50 years. And whereas, the city of Jefferson will be singing, you gotta fight for your right to party. And we are the champions." Now therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the city of Jefferson, do hereby congratulate the Kansas City Chiefs, Super Bowl '54 champions, and declare Kansas City Chiefs' Day in the city of Jefferson. So Chiefs Nation, KCMO, celebrated in JCMO, and long live LIV, the Chiefs. Congratulations, Chiefs. So yes, we're all wearing red, and hopefully the rest of, like, the week or forever. I don't care. And even, even most of us are wearing red. So to congratulate the Chiefs, invite all of our staff that has red on and council and everybody. We're going to get a picture to celebrate. Our Chiefs, go Chiefs, you gotta fight. All right, for your right.
I thought Florida State did this. Is this, I thought it was Florida State, Atlanta Braves.
All right, here we go. One, two. Carlos, I don't see you, Carlos.
All right. So I want to know how Carlos is going to celebrate Kansas City Chiefs' Day.
Oh, Kansas City Kansas Day.
Poor Carlos. We give you such a hard time, but it's deserved, just like the Chiefs deserved after 50 years. I know, pretty exciting time, so. We thought about you, Carlos. Okay. Item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, no appointments tonight. Item seven, no presentations. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I have a couple of announcements. First of all, President's Day is our next meeting, which is a Monday, so we are meeting on that Monday of President's Day. So just to avoid any confusion, in case people think, you know, we will be here. So I will not be at that meeting. Councilman Mahalovich will be running that meeting, though, in my absence, and.
With you, it's not incredible. I can't imagine I sing that. I apologize for that.
Okay, well, don't disappoint me, just saying. All right. And I also wanted to announce that last weekend was the chamber gala, and our very own Lieutenant David Williams, who I didn't realize you were going to be here tonight, but this is on my announcements, that you were selected as the emcee for that really well-attended, important community event, and I thought it was very cool that you were asked to do that, and you did a fantastic job.
You did a great job. Congratulations.
You did. You really made us all proud.
Yeah.
We're very impressed. Somehow, when you get up in front of a room of that big, of a room with that many people, they stop and listen. I don't know how you do it, but they really did. And it was a lot of fun, so thank you for doing that. We have our four standing committees. Are there any committee or council reports? Okay, and we have admin this week, correct, still, on Wednesday? Okay. Any other committees? Okay. And item B, we have a, rather than bicentennial, that is going to be a census update, so I'd like to invite Katrina Williams to the podium to give us the latest and greatest about being counted.
I'm going to take a bunch of excitement and attention about the Chiefs.
Oh, don't worry. It's still early.
Woo, go census.
Just wait till Census Day. We'll have a lot of excitement.
Great. So I'm just going to give you a quick update on our Cole County, Jefferson City Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census. 2020 census, it's happening this year. Can't wait. We have two goals with our committee, and those two goals are to get people hired as census workers. There are a lot of different positions available, and then also to get people counted, to get the word out about the census, why the census is important, and why it's important you fill out your form. Local recruitment in our community for those census jobs, we really needed about 620 people. Right now, we're at 75%. We have about 464 people that have applied as of this morning, and a little over 400, I know, qualified as being eligible for those positions. So they're going to start calling people and actually hiring them on here in the next couple of weeks. Pay in Cole County is around $17 an hour, so it's a pretty good part-time gig, if you're interested in that part-time job. It's a temporary job. We've created an action plan within our committee, so we want to do a lot of different outreach activities for employment and for educating the public about the census and the importance of the census. Have a lot of people in our group that are doing different kinds of PSAs, getting things on the radio, hopefully get some things on television, get some things in local newsletters, newspapers, as much social media as we can. We have a lot of educational materials we're sending out. We've had four job fairs, and I think all of the job fairs were in January, I believe, and those turned out really well. We're encouraging more people and organizations to get involved and come to our meetings. Our next meeting is February 26 at 10:30 here at City Hall, in the room across the hall, in the Boon Bancroft Room. We encourage anyone who wants to participate to come. The mayor is on our committee. Councilman Kimna is on our committee. We have a few other people in the community. We have about 16, 17 people that are participating in the committee right now. If you need any more information about the census, you can go to 2020census.gov, or if you're looking for employment information, you can go to 2020census.gov/jobs. If you have any other questions, you can contact me here at City Hall, or you can contact my partner, Melissa Johnson, who's with the county, with Cole County, and we're both liaisons for the group.
Great. Thank you for the update and for being our liaison from the city.
And I do have some handouts, too, so if anybody needs anything about, just frequently asked questions for the census, and then also information about jobs, we have a couple handouts up here if anybody wants to take any of those.
Great. Does council have any questions about census? So the time is coming here quick, so I'm glad to see that we have such a high percentage, that we're about at that 75% number and for applicants to work, and looking forward to getting a complete count. So want to make sure everybody's counted, so we'll be sure to have regular updates. Okay, so we'll be sure to pick up the information as well. Thank you, Katrina. Items nine, is there any Lincoln University update at this time, Councilman Graham, anything to announce? Okay. Item 10, any presentations from the gallery? We don't have any signed up. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced 201999.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stan Moore's construction and the amount of $24,000 for the airport terminal asbestos removal and demolition project, and authorizing the supplemental appropriation within the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this bill will authorize a demolition contract to demolish the terminal at the Jefferson City Airport. Terminal, as the council is aware, was damaged during the recent flooding. We did receive an insurance settlement, so this bill also includes a supplemental appropriation of moving some of those insurance proceeds out of our airport fund balance into an expense account so that we can pay for this demolition. We're actually asking for slightly more in that supplemental, just to ensure there's any incidentals that come up through the demolition process that we have funds to cover it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Hesse?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask for a suspension of the rules and take this bill up for third reading this evening.
Great. We've had a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Okay, at this time, we will take up Bill 201999. Are there any council questions or deliberations?
I just have one question.
Councilman Graham?
The Stan Moore's construction out of Kennet, have we had some, have they performed any work for us in the past, or is this our first time dealing with?
This is the first time that they've worked for us, to my knowledge, yes.
So did we do some type of background check as relates to the type of work that they do?
Yes, we did, and no issues were raised through that process.
So I'm just going back to Councilman Mahalovich. As we look at this, we see there's about a little bit less than $3,000 for someone who was local, so. Okay. This will be our first time.
Any further question, council, I'm sorry, Mr. Kroll?
Would, Britt, would there be any federal implications, any federal funding issues associated with that? That may be why we.
I don't believe so, since this is a local funds-only project. There isn't any federal requirements in it, other than typical laws related to purchasing in the state of Missouri.
Any other questions or comments? Of course, this doesn't affect, I mean, the airport is still in operation, and I think that's a known fact, but some people may not realize that this doesn't affect the operation.
That's very true, and something I appreciate the mayor highlighting, this, you know, we believe that this is not detrimental to our airport operations, with the exception of the fact that it's going to have some construction going on very near our ramp, but we have allowances for that, and I think we're in good shape there.
Great. All right. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hesse.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019100.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2020 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The supplemental is for three pieces of software upgrade. Our Microsoft Exchange, the current version we're using is Exchange 2010, and it went out of support in January of 2020. And our Microsoft Office version is currently the 2010, and it'll be out of support in October of 2020. So we're upgrading to Office 2019. And then the Springbrook software that we use for our financial, accounting, payroll, utility billing functions and reporting is currently out of support, so we requested the funds to upgrade it to the more current version. And those three items were recommended by the Finance Committee at its January 23 meeting to move forward to full council. The last piece is $5,685 for matching grant portion for the Heartland Port Authority of Central Missouri, and at the May 20, 2019, City Council meeting, a motion was passed to support that grant match, not to exceed $7,000. It's a 10% required match for that grant from the Missouri Agriculture and Small Business Development Authority.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay. 2019101.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the county of Cole, Missouri, for emergency medical services.
Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a annual agreement brought before the council as a bill this time. Previously, it's come before the council as a consent agenda item. Really, no significant changes, other than we formalize some of the past practices and current practices and put them in the form of this MOU that's been updated for the 2020 year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Schofield? Okay. Item 13, bills pending. 201996.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MODOT for public
current practices, and put them in the form of this MOU that's been updated for the 2020 year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Schofield? Okay. Item 13, bills pending, 201996.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT for public transit operating assistance.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as the clerk stated, this is an operating assistance grant through MoDOT. We apply for this grant each year. It provides a significant amount of money, but certainly not the bulk of what we do for our operating cost. There is a 50/50 grant share, but we have that covered through our normal operating processes. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or council discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, 201997.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Centec and Associates for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this contract is our annual maintenance agreement with our heating and air conditioning contractor, used in various projects throughout the city and all city divisions and facilities, just for annual maintenance, et cetera. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, 201997.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Centec and Associates for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this contract is our annual maintenance agreement with our heating and air conditioning contractor, used in various projects throughout the city and all city divisions and facilities, just for annual maintenance, et cetera. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, 201997.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Centec and Associates for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this contract is our annual maintenance agreement with our heating and air conditioning contractor, used in various projects throughout the city and all city divisions and facilities, just for annual maintenance, et cetera. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 19, any new business? Do mark your calendar, there's a possible work session next Monday, which I believe is February 10th, maybe, so mark your calendars for 5:30, and we'll see if we get that scheduled, so...
Is this a record for you?
I think so.
Oh, my God.
Wow. And item 20, any unfinished? Item 21, council and wiseman.
It's so early, she's like, what do I say?
Let's get out early so we can all celebrate Kansas City Chiefs' Day. All right, we are officially adjourned.